All right. Sorry for the late start, for those of you who are watching. We had some technical issues with YouTube and still are having those. So we will just be on the cable channel probably tonight and then YouTube later. So I am calling the 2,333th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council's order. This meeting is being conducted by video conference. Council and staff are participating via Zoom. The public has been invited to watch the meeting via the city's YouTube channel, except not tonight, or on Comcast Cable Channel 30 in City Limits. If members of the public would like to comment during this meeting, they may submit written comments by email to ocr@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. If members of the public would like to speak verbally during this meeting, they will need to register by email to receive the Zoom login. To register by email, send the same address, ocr@MilwaukeeOregon.gov, and provide your name, city of residence, and topic you wish to discuss. City staff are monitoring the email inbox and will make every effort to respond during the meeting. If members of the public participate in this meeting through Zoom and become disruptive, we will mute and remove them. If that fails to stop the disruptions, we will recess the meeting and return within five minutes. If we are unable to continue, council will briefly meet off air to move unfinished business to the next council agenda. If you have technical issues, please contact staff at ocr@MilwaukeeOregon.gov. All right. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag thing happening tonight, Scott?
Yeah, they should be able to switch to the flag on the screen.
Okay. My pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. It sounded like I did that solo, everybody who's muted. All right. The city of Milwaukee respectfully acknowledges that our community is located on the ancestral homeland of the Clackamas people. In 1855, the surviving members of the Clackamas signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, also known as the Cuyahoga Treaty, with the federal government in good faith. We offer our respect and gratitude to the indigenous people of this land. I think on this eve of Earth Day, it's worth noting that the Native Americans lived on this continent for millennia and lived in harmony with nature and had full and robust societies before we came here. And we would do well to mimic that to the greatest degree possible. All right, so we have no announcements this evening. So Lisa, are you-
Mr. Mayor, there are announcements on the second page. There was a script sent out yesterday or this morning that had announcements on them.
A new script?
Yes, I can read them to you if you're fine.
Excellent, how about you do that?
All right, let me skip to the, there they are. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
All right. So announcements for this evening as presented on the screen. We have the 2020 City Council Candidate Information Packet is now available on the city's website. The November 3rd general election will feature council positions one and three. The candidate filing window is July 27th through August 25th. If you have any questions, please contact the city elections officer by email at ocr@MilwaukeeOregon.gov or call 503-786-7502. The letting library remains closed due to COVID-19, but staff have been working to provide opportunities for the community to connect online. Upcoming programs include Bug Science Online, which will be held on Thursday, April 23rd at 2:00 PM by video conference. And then on Thursday, April 30th, from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, Dana Haynes, a novelist, will present his two most recent books and discuss the challenges of working at an online newspaper. Contact librarian Robert Langson at LangsonR, L-A-N-X-O-N-R, at MilwaukeeOregon.gov to attend online. In response to the challenges presented by COVID-19, the Milwaukee Farmers Market has been researching how to safely offer a market. The result is a modified market that will open on Sunday, May 3rd, from 9:30 AM to 2:00 PM at Harrison Street and Main Street. Market modifications are extensive to provide a safe shopping experience and include less vendors and focus only on providing essential items. The market will not be offering a drive-through farmers market. However, they have added information to their website about alternate ordering and pickup locations that are available for some of the vendors. Please review the market's online COVID-19 requirements prior to visiting the market. Their website is www.milwaukeefarmersmarket.com, or if you have questions, call 503-407-0956. For more information about each of these events and others, please visit the city's homepage at MilwaukeeOregon.gov.
All righty. Now Lisa had an item that she wanted to bring up as an announcement. Lisa, are you there?
I am here. And I'm very sorry to be bringing this item forward. It's kind of one of a couple of melancholy tragic things that have happened in recent days here and here for our community. But on Thursday evening, a young man drowned in Milwaukee Bay near Elkhawk Island, or he's presumed drowned, I should start with that. Around 5:00 PM, I noticed a fire truck, an EMT vehicle come out and a number of EMTs pour out and go down to the waterfront. We've since come to learn that his kayak had capsized. A number of people tried to get to him, including one of my neighbors, but by the time they got to the kayak, he could not be found. The young man's name is Saul Gallegos Ruiz. The exact reasons for the kayak overturning have not been determined. The authorities don't attribute it necessarily to wakes. They do believe that the lack of a life preserver and the cold temperature, the 48-degree temperature of the water probably contributed to his inability to get to shore or to, anyway, to survive. They've been searching for days and have not yet found his body. His family has been here up and down the river looking. Some of them, I think, have been on boats as well, out in the water looking for him. And it's a very sad situation. Incidents that happen on the water are not investigated by the Milwaukee Police Department, but rather Clackamas County Sheriff's Office and their dive rescue team have the lead. So they've been leading the search here and a number of other jurisdictions have participated as well. I just think we all want to send out our heartfelt condolences to Mr. Gallegos' family, his mother Maria Ruiz, his father Saul Gallegos, his brother Everardo, and the large extended family and friends that obviously are in mourning at this time. We also want to send out our thanks for the long hours and efforts put in by the Clackamas County Dive Rescue Team and the other jurisdictions, which include the Multnomah County Sheriff's Office, Clackamas Fire District Number One, Lake Oswego Fire District, and Tuolaton Valley Fire and Rescue. And then I would put in a personal note. Please, people who go out on the river, whether you're on a paddleboard or a motorboat or anything in between, please wear a life vest. We don't want to have incidents like this happening in our town. And please also be courteous of other river users. Although they don't attribute this incident to wakes, I have frequently seen motorboats sending up fairly large wakes more in high summer than at this time of year. But certainly when pulling skiers and when jet skis are out and other things, the wakes, the interplay of the motorized craft and the non-motorized craft don't always make for the safest of conditions. So I ask people to please wear a life jacket and please be courteous and thoughtful of other river users. And I guess that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thanks, Lisa. I learned a little bit more about that incident today. He apparently is, was a top athlete and a strong swimmer. And there were a fair amount of wake activity at the time, according to a witness. They didn't see him actually go over, but they said there were a lot of boats out there putting up wakes. And as a paddler myself, I know how easy it is to get capsized, particularly if you're not paying attention, you know, looking to one side or another as you're paddling. So even a strong swimmer can end up in trouble. And that's why it's so important for people to wear life jackets. It's critical. I was a lifeguard, I was a competitive swimmer, and when I go kayak, I wear a life jacket. It's absolutely important. So it's very sad. Hopefully, we will find him soon. There is some discussion of a kind of a memorial paddle on Friday at 4:00. I'm not sure that that's firmed up, but for folks who do have an interest in that, and of course, there'll be social distancing and all that, but that's out there. All right. Our next item, Earth Day Proclamation, and this will be presented by our Climate Action and Sustainability Coordinator, Natalie Rogers.
Hi, good evening. So can everyone hear me okay?
Yep.
Great. I always have fears about that. So my name is Natalie Rogers. I'm the Climate Action Sustainability Coordinator for the city of Milwaukee. I'm very pleased to be here today to speak to you about the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, which is happening tomorrow, April 22nd. The original Earth Day happened in 1970 and marked a significant point in America's environmental and regulatory history. At that time, the environment had little protection from the daily exploitations that society places on nature. Industrial pollution, degradation from extractive and polluting processes, and unsafe practices led to shocking environmental consequences, massive bird die-offs, rivers literally catching on fire, human health impacts, and more. Many of these repercussions we're still dealing with today. But these events that were happening were not going unnoticed. On April 22nd in 1970, around 20 million Americans mobilized for action, calling for a new way forward that took environmental health into consideration. And elected leaders took note. The Environmental Protection Agency was created shortly after, as was the passing of the Clean Air, Clean Water, and Endangered Species Acts. All of these have improved the environmental health and business practices today. While these regulatory actions have made significant strides in protecting past, present, and future generations, the most significant environmental crisis is still upon us. The climate crisis is impacting communities around the world. Just as shared voices called for action to protect environmental quality for the first Earth Day in 1970, we need the same community empowerment today, 50 years later, to fight the climate crisis. So I encourage everyone listening today to be a part of this new wave of action. We all need to reach for climate solutions in our homes, businesses, and the community. So the city of Milwaukee is actively implementing the Milwaukee Climate Action Plan, but we need individual actions of our community members and commitment to truly accomplish our goal of becoming a carbon-neutral community by 2045. And we have plenty of resources to help everyone, community members, implement climate actions from the safety of their own homes this Earth Day, which you can see on the following slide. So I really recommend everyone visit milwaukeeclimateaction.com to access the Household Climate Action Plan, which has a variety of easy and impactful climate actions that you can do from your own home. And many of these are very simple and actually will have cost savings for you sometimes. In addition, you can access more resources to participate in Earth Day through activities from Saul, the Portland Audubon Society, and Friends of Trees is actually even hosting a virtual party where that includes Tree Talks and Box. Through all of these resources and more, if you just Google Earth Day or you visit earthday.org, you, your family, and your friends can celebrate and contribute this Earth Day. And we know that there's an ongoing public health crisis right now that's occupying many of our minds and efforts. But now, more than ever, our community is recognizing the need for community resiliency and a healthy environment to live, play, work, and thrive in. Taking part in this Earth Day by doing one or two very small climate actions can help create the healthy future and planet that we all want for ourselves and our future generations. So thank you.
Thanks. I will now read the proclamation. Whereas the people of this city, the Dogwood City of the West, are proud to reside amid the natural beauty of the Pacific Northwest and the state of Oregon and all the trees, plants, waterways, and wildlife encompassed in this region that give character and life to the landscape. And whereas the first Earth Day was proclaimed on April 22nd, 1970, and its annual observance has encouraged the conservation, protection, and appreciation of our planet's ecosystems and natural resources. And whereas April 22nd, 2020 marks the 50th anniversary of the first Earth Day and is centered around climate action and increasing community commitment to solving the climate crisis. And whereas the Milwaukee community has embraced carbon and sustainability goals in the face of climate change, the most pressing threat for our planet. And whereas the city of Milwaukee has formally adopted a climate action plan that includes strategies and actions for our city to conserve our natural resources and encourage sustainable neighborhoods and behaviors and promote resiliency. And whereas the city of Milwaukee declared a climate emergency on January 21st, 2020 and called for the acceleration of the climate goals established in the climate action plan to better address the urgency of the climate crisis and to call on community members to take part in climate action in their own homes, businesses, and communities. And whereas education, partnerships, and community action for restoring and protecting our ecosystems, climate, and planet are promoted and honored by all of Milwaukee's residents, as is the shared desire for resilient community, environmental justice, and access to nature for all community members. And whereas the city of Milwaukee proudly recognizes all who protect and preserve the environment and climate through participation in Earth Day activities by taking a proactive role in the protection of our community's precious natural resources. Now therefore, I mark Gamba, Mayor of the city of Milwaukee, municipal corporation of the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, to hereby proclaim April 22nd, 2020 to be Earth Day in Milwaukee.
Before you move on, this is kind of a silly point, but I was sharing recipes with somebody and there's a cute recipe online for Earth Day cookies, which would be fun to do with kids. And it's basically just a sugar cookie recipe or a sugar cookie mix and green and blue food coloring. And you make, you know, continents and oceans and you bake the cookies and they're adorable. And I just wanted to put that out there as a family, family thing to do tomorrow.
I was also going to throw out the fun fact that some of you may know, maybe all of you know it, but Dennis Hayes, who is generally credited as being the founder of Earth Day, though he would tell you that it was a collective effort, is a graduate of Clark College just across the river in Vancouver. So Earth Day actually has some very local roots. What became a global phenomenon really started in the Pacific Northwest.
Wow, interesting.
Yeah.
Thank you for that. All right. Anybody else? Any comments? Okay. Then we have our next proclamation. Scott, did you have something to lead in on this?
Yes, we have a John County, if I can find him. He's unmuted himself. John from the U.S. Census Bureau has joined us this evening. Can you hear us, John? Can you talk?
I can. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Excellent.
So go ahead, take it away, John. You have a couple minutes to introduce the proclamation.
Sure. Well, let me just give you, I haven't seen your proclamation yet. I'm not sure if you sent it to me, Scott. But I'll just give you guys a brief rundown on what's going on with the census, because like so many other things, there've been a lot of schedule and operational changes that we've had to make to adjust because of the COVID-19 crisis. So, and so you might remember that April 1st was Census Day. That's the marker day that we measure everyone by. Originally, the window for everyone to respond, it opened March 12th. It was going to run until July 31st. And, but, and then our field operations, where we're going to have the numerators going out and everything was going to begin around now, maybe the next week or two. Everything's on hold, quite frankly. So we're hoping to reopen our offices and get our field workers back out there. Maybe by June 1st, I haven't heard definitively yet, but what we do know at this point is that the window to respond has now been pushed back until October 31st. So there's some good news there in that we're not, you know, getting compressed in terms of our timeline. So this, the census counting effort is going to go on a lot longer. What that will mean, though, is that it'll push back the final results and crunching all the numbers and getting a report to the president, which is supposed to happen by December 31st. That's going to be pushed into next year. And likewise, with reports back out to the states for congressional redistricting and legislative redistricting and such. So basically, everything's just getting pushed back. I'll tell you right now, though, with the internet self-response, it's the first time the census has done this. They didn't do it in 2010. The internet self-response mechanism, which is by its very nature a socially-distanced mechanism, is very safe and easy response, is working well. Oregon as a whole is bumping up toward about 50, 54% self-response rate already, which is really good. Clackamas County is bumping up toward 60%. So that's, that's really excellent news. There's a feature on the website that says, and I, Scott, I can send this to you later, which you can zoom in and see what the response rates are like in individual census tracks. So a lot of those around in your area, I think things are going pretty well. So that's kind of, that's the main kind of operational change I wanted to leave you all with. I think, as everyone knows, the census is very important in terms of voter representation and also for federal funding that comes in. It's about, you know, $16 billion a year that comes into Oregon as a result of our census count and our characteristics. Portland State University uses a number, which is about $3,200 per person, and that's per year for 10 years. So it's important that we get this right because we don't get to go back in and true things up. So, I mean, I'm going to be, for now at least, you know, my colleague Sarah Bouchore was the on-the-ground person in Clackamas County. She's now leading our team or adding some people. I'm kind of covering everything in Clackamas County for now. So I'll be your liaison that could change at any time and we'll let you know. So, and I'm here to take questions either now or after the fact. So Scott, I'll send it back over to you.
Thank you, John.
Anybody have any questions? Yeah, I don't think that can be overstated how important the census is. Oregon is one of the states that, in all likelihood, will get another congressional seat in this census, assuming we all respond. So that's, that's a critical piece. And then the other critical piece is, is the funding, as he pointed out. Thank you for that, John. It's good to have those numbers. I for one have gone online and filled it out. And it's super easy. It took like five minutes if not.
I want to ask a question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, so I also filled it out online and I was surprised at how easy it was because it really only asked me like names and ages of people in my household. But I know the census collects other data. We refer to it for our income data, you know, average income, educational levels, all kinds of things that this census information didn't ask us. So can you speak a little bit about where the Census Bureau gets that other information and how that's collected?
Yeah, yeah, there's, so with the decennial census, it's just, you know, it's a head count and some characteristics, gender, whether you own a home or rent a home, your ethnicity, and that kind of thing. When you're talking about income statistics and that kind of thing, it's done. But it is the Census Bureau that does it. It's something called the American Community Survey, which is more of a rolling survey all around the country that they're doing all the time. And they pick up much different information. The main, the difference is, is that the American Community Survey does not have any impact on, on political representation like for congressional reaportment and that kind of thing and legislative districting, nor federal funding. It's used for other purposes. So what you're referring to is probably American Community Survey information.
Thank you.
So I also have a question. I happen to rent a room at a house and I know there's an ADU at that house that shares the same address. I know the house only got one of those letters with the little code that was specific to it. How, how do we make sure? I started to try and fill it out in such a way as to make it clear that there were other people living at that address, but I couldn't answer any of the questions because I actually don't know them. But it was, it was not possible to do that. So what's the process for?
Yeah, there's, these can be tricky situations. We're seeing this a lot because of things like ADUs, again, like you say, that are, they fall under the same address. And so if there, if you've already closed your, you know, your census, your census account online, if you will, I don't believe it's possible to reopen it. So one thing we can do is, but if there is someone living there who wasn't reported, we definitely do want to count them. We can work with our field staff and I can actually connect you with, with our field staff so they can, they can do a kind of a true-up mechanism to make sure that they catch that person. But I believe the online one is already closed. So I would actually have to look and see how that is done because it's one of the tricky kind of on-the-ground field things that's starting to come up.
Yeah, and I think, you know, because of the cost of housing, there's a lot of families that are doubled up. And in some cases, you know, one family lives in what used to be the garage and, you know, they're probably not going to, you know, you're going to have some discrepancies there. So it'd be great to have some kind of a system for sort of double-checking that. Like even if there was a checkbox, are there other people that live at this address that are not in your household?
Right, right. And that's why, and this is one of the things we do with, with these kind of efforts. Unfortunately, in the last six weeks, we haven't really been, because we've been, you know, quarantined, we haven't been able to kind of go out and about and do this kind of troubleshooting. But that's, this is what my team and I do, so we can definitely find an answer for you on that. But it's important for folks to know, like, when you get an invitation to respond from the, from the Census Bureau or the actual paper questionnaire, that those may be showing up in the, in the next two weeks or so. You notice it's not addressed to a person there, it's just addressed to that residence and that physical address. So, but yeah, you're right, that could mean a sublet apartment or a roommate or, or something like that. So those are things that's, that's going to be important to kind of unwind on the spot. And it does get tricky because there's a lot of these kind of situations.
Okay, yeah, when you know what people should do in that instance, let us know and we'll, you know, spread the word.
Absolutely.
All right, well, thank you. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? No? All right, then I will read the proclamation, if I can. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America mandates that a national census be conducted every 10 years, and whereas census data is used in decision-making and planning for schools, housing, and transportation. And whereas census data informs how the federal government distributes funding to states, counties, and local governments. And whereas the city of Milwaukee is working to support the 2020 census in the hopes of increasing participation in the census. And whereas the city of Milwaukee is committed to using its influence to convey the importance of the census, particularly to community members in economically and resource-challenged areas. Now therefore, I mark Gamba, Mayor of the city of Milwaukee, municipal corporation of the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, to hereby proclaim the city's support and cooperation in promoting awareness of and participation in the 2020 census. I hereby proclaim the city's support and cooperation in promoting awareness of and participation in the 2020 census. All righty then. Consent agenda. Right, is that the next thing? Going back and forth here.
Yep.
Team screen. Okay.
I'm gonna sign off, Scott. Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, guys. You bet.
Thank you.
Tonight's consent agenda includes the minutes of the March 17th, 2020 regular session, a resolution designating the regularly scheduled city council meeting dates revising the allowed times of regular session meetings, and repealing Resolution Two, Dash, 2020. A resolution requesting the transfer of jurisdiction to the city by Clackamas County Board of Commissioners for portions of Southeast Monroe Street and Southeast Keene Road. And finally, a resolution in support of the submission of a planning assistance grant application to the Oregon Department of Land Conservation and Development. Does any member of council wish to remove an item of the con- consent agenda?
No.
No.
Kathy?
Uh, no, I am wondering if, um, get you the updated script. But, um, that's Scott's problem, not mine.
Am I missing something? Do I need to go find this updated script?
Uh, I think the big change, Mr. Mayor, was the announcements earlier on, so I think the rest of it should be the same.
Okay. In that case, I would entertain a motion.
To move.
Second.
Is been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. It passes unanimously. All righty then. Audience participation. Scott, do we have anybody?
I don't see anybody, Mr. Mayor.
In that case, I will not read that thing. Um, Ms. Ober, do we have any follow-ups from the April 7th audience participation?
Uh, during the April 7th meeting, there was a request from, from a member of the public to actually, um, add our gender pronouns onto, uh, various staff appropriate locations. So onto things like signature lines, um, onto, uh, name badges when we wear them. Um, and I actually really appreciated that he brought it up. It's something that staff have been working, many staff have added already and have been doing for probably the last year. Uh, but it was a great reminder that it's something that's important to normalize. Uh, that pronouns are a part of someone's identity and they're an important part of how we communicate with each other. I've noticed that a number of people actually on this call have also updated their pronouns on their own names. Uh, and I, I think it's something that is, it was a kind reminder. I think it's a great one. And it's one that staff will continue to do as, as they feel comfortable.
All righty. Yeah, I am not finding a different. All right. Uh, our next item is annexation of 5950 Southeast Maple Street. File number A dash two zero two zero dash zero two. An ordinance, um, for the purpose of this hearing, the purpose of this hearing is for council to consider the proposed annexation. Um, it will be, the staff report will be presented by our assistant planner, Mary Heveling. Um, take it away, Mary.
All right. Hello. I think I'm unmuted. Yes. Okay, so, um, as the mayor said, we have, uh, expedited annexation for 5950 Southeast Maple Street. Um, the purpose of this annexation is to connect to city sewer. It's in the northeast sewer extension in Nisi project area. Um, and applicant, applicant has paid the reimbursement fee, the applicable system development charges for the property in order to connect to the city sewer. And upon annexation, it will be in the Arton Zone, which is, uh, similar for the surrounding area as well. And the comp plan, comp is a plan designation will be low density, which is also similar to the surrounding area. Um, the current use of the property is a single-family home and it's intended to stay that way. Um, notices were sent to the surrounding properties, all properties within four hundred feet of this, of the site. Received notice, uh, city departments and other governmental agencies and districts um, received notice. We received zero comments, so none was passed on to you. Um, at this time, staff does not believe that there's gonna be any adverse impacts to annexing this property into the city and, uh, we recommend approval. And that's about it.
Okay, does council have any questions for staff? All right. The council will now take public testimony on the proposed annexation. I will recognize speakers with any questions. Uh, they should be addressed through me. When you begin to speak, state your name and city of residence for the record. For those who wish to testify, you may submit written comments by email to ocr@milwaukeeorgan.gov, and staff will read those comments aloud. For those who wish to testify orally, in Zoom, on the particip-, uh, on the participant board, please raise your hand icon. I will call on you and unmute you to allow you to testify. If you're having technical difficulties, send an email or a chat message and one of the staff will attempt to help you, help you. Presentation times for all speakers will be limited. Uh, representatives of groups will be limited to ten minutes. Individuals will be limited to three minutes. Please confine your remarks to pose, action, and avoid repetition of irrelevant information. Is there anybody that wishes to testify on this? No?
There is not, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, then staff probably doesn't have any response to the testimony. If there are no further questions from the council, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Move to close the public hearing?
I'll second.
Is been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Um, all those in favor? Opposed? None heard. Uh, I've lost my place. The public testimony portion of the public hearing on the proposed annexation is hereby closed. Uh, is there any council discussion?
Nope.
Many times before, nothing new, so.
If you're ready for a vote, I would entertain a motion.
I move. You go ahead, Lisa.
I move for the first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance annexing attractive land identified as tax lot one two E three zero D A zero eight seven zero zero and located at 5950 Southeast Maple Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A twenty twenty dash zero two.
I'll second that.
Is been moved and seconded for first and second readings by title only, an adoption of the ordinance annexing attractive land identified as tax lot one two E three zero D A zero eight seven zero zero and located at five nine five zero Southeast Maple Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A dash two zero two zero dash zero two. Uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None heard. It passes unanimously. Um, Ms. Ober, would you please read the ordinance by title only twice?
Yes, I will. An ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon annexing attractive land identified as tax lot one two E three zero D A zero eight seven zero zero and located at five nine five zero Southeast Maple Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A dash twenty twenty dash zero zero two. And again, an ordinance of the city of Milwaukee, Oregon annexing attractive land identified as tax lot one two E three zero D A zero eight seven zero zero and located at five nine five zero Southeast Maple Street into the city limits of the city of Milwaukee. File number A dash twenty twenty dash zero zero two.
Mr. Stock, where's your public counsel?
Counsel President Faulkner.
Aye.
Counselor Beatty.
Aye.
Counselor Parks.
Aye.
Counselor Hizey.
Aye.
Mayor Gamba.
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero, ordinance two one eight nine.
Okay, looks like our next business is the Affordable Housing Construction Excise Tax Code Amendment, an ordinance. And this will be presented by our Community Development Director, uh, Leila Aman.
All right, good evening, Mayor. Counselors, Leila Aman, she, her, hers, and the Community Development Director, and happy to be here tonight to, um, request council's consideration to adopt updates to the Milwaukee Municipal Code. Scott, if you could advance to the next slide. So we're asking you to adopt updates to the municipal code that relate to the exemption, um, to exemptions to the Affordable Housing Construction Excise Tax. Next slide, please. So the intent of our request is to help encourage more affordable mixed-income housing. The amendment to the M M C clarifies that multifamily housing projects that include deed-restricted units can be exempted. So what we're asking is to allow for market-rate projects um, that are willing to provide some portion of those units to be income-restricted at eighty percent of median income or less, which is consistent with the construction excise tax affordability criteria. Um, we want the opportunity to encourage developers to do that. So what we're proposing is to clarify the language in the ordinance that would allow those projects that are not a hundred percent affordable, but provide some percentage of affordability, um, to be exempt from the C E T. So again, it's an incentive, um, to provide income-restricted housing that wouldn't otherwise have been built. Scott, if you could please advance the slides? Um, what I believe is that this tool will allow the city another tool to leverage income-restricted units. What we are asking is that, um, we're going to require that the developer demonstrate that the investment on the part of the city, so our foregoing of revenue, is at least twice the investment on the part of the applicant. And so what we're asking is, is that an example would be a forty million dollar mixed-use project would be subject to a four hundred thousand dollar C E T. Uh, what we would ask the developer to provide and what staff would evaluate is whether or not the foregone revenue for a thirty-year period, um, exceeds eight hundred thousand dollars. So we're trying to get a minimum of a two-to-one, um, benefit to our foregoing of revenue. Um, I will say that an affordable unit in today's market, that any unit, um, is roughly two hundred thousand dollars to be constructed. So, um, we're hoping to see some of these, uh, units leveraged through this tool. Um, in addition to requiring twice the investment on the part of the applicant, we're also requiring a deed restriction on those units. So what we will require is prior to our release of a certificate of occupancy, is a demonstration, um, that the, uh, an evidence through a deed restriction that's recorded on the property so that the city's investment, um, by foregoing that revenue is, um, memorialized, um, on that property. So if it changes hands, um, that deed restriction travels with the property. And this would be for a period of thirty years, which is again, consistent with the ordinance as it is. Um, Scott, if you could advance to the next slide, please? So the specific language here is noted. Um, we're just adding market-rate multifamily housing. We're adding a section here that, uh, asks for a portion of the units. So perhaps a hundred-unit project comes in, they want to dedicate ten percent of those units, so ten units, and eighty percent of the median income for thirty years, uh, they could then apply for an exemption. Um, and they would work with us to demonstrate the financial impact to the developer of the deed-restruction unit exceeds a C E T. So we've developed, um, in consultation with an economist, a pretty detailed pro forma model that we would work with the developer, um, to get that information. We would peer review and test that. Um, and if needed, you know, we could do some, um, third-party review to ensure that the information that they're providing is consistent, um, prior to any approval of that C E T exemption. Uh, next slide, please, Scott. So with that, I'm happy to entertain any questions, but our ask today is for council to adopt the ordinance that would, um, make these changes. Questions?
Trying, yes.
Okay. Like it's crickets here.
Wouldn't unmute. Uh, so in our C E T program, we have sort of two pots of money, commercial and residential. I'm assuming this is commercial even though it is an apartment building, which is a residential use.
Yeah, this would mostly fall into our commercial, um, pot of money, yes. Because mixed, that's a mixed-use building would fall into the commercial pot.
Okay.
And that's what we expect that, that the applications, if we get them, would be for that.
So the, uh, the upside, even more so than the doubling of the investment, is that we are getting an eighty percent area median income, uh, return from a pot of money that's only guaranteed to go to, I think, a hundred and twenty, right? Isn't our workforce, what's our, what's the workforce, uh?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it is a hundred and twenty-four. So the money would normally come in, and if a developer wanted to do this, then we would just take it back out and invest that into a project up to a hundred and twenty percent. The way we've structured the ordinance, as you're correct, is that we're asking that those units be eighty percent or less of the area median income.
So this is really a, a good double win in these situations.
I believe that it is, yes.
Cool. Well done.
Is anyone else doing this, or is this all fancy new, um, your brainchild work here?
We like to, we like to just break new territory here, so I'm not aware of anyone else doing this.
That's what I thought, but you would know better than I did. So it seems very elegant and very cool. I, I, I think this is really promising. It's very, very fun to see this.
Anybody else? Questions, comments?
Lisa's trying to unmute herself.
I guess I, um, I mean, I think it's definitely worth a try. I guess I do see some, I do have worries about our ability of, about developers gaming the system and exaggerating their losses to, in order to build fewer units, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and so I'm kind of, um, I'm kind of inclined to think we should do it for five years and then revisit. Let the future, a future council revisit how it's actually worked for five years, um, rather than do it as in, you know, as a know-it-in-sight kind of thing.
The only thing I would add, because I, I understand and appreciate your concern about the gaming of the system. I think any program that puts in place, having just gone through the, a big program and executing that in two weeks, there's always people who try to do that. Um, but I think that the approach that we've developed, we have a very robust model. Um, staff, including myself, are really pretty up to speed on what the rents are. Can really do a pretty adequate sniff test of assumptions, um, which is why we require them to work with us to provide that data so that we could evaluate it. If there were any doubt, um, I would recommend that the city get a third-party objective evaluation of that. Um, because we would be foregoing revenue and we want to be certain that those, um, those issues are addressed in advance. Um, the other thing I would say is that because we're requiring this for thirty years, that that, whatever rents they provide, this provides stability for thirty years. The market does a lot of this, and this provides a very slow, you know, it's just a very solid, um, baseline, um, for income-restricted units. So, um, I would say that I, I appreciate that concern. I think that would be my top priority in many applications that come in, is to verify that data. And any of my successors would certainly do the same.
And I would wonder if you did put a five-year limit on it. That's not a lot of certainty for a commercial developer. They work on such long timelines. I mean, we've seen projects that have taken three or more years to get going. So, um, I wouldn't want someone to start the process and feel like it was possible and then for a variety of reasons that were out of their control, no longer be able to take advantage of the program.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think, um, the better move is just to make sure that, you know, if you're confident that our system will, um, capture those and, and really have a, a solid basis for a good sniff test. our system will capture those and really have a solid basis for a good sniff test. I'm, I'm, I'm confident. I mean, I guess I would ask the question this way. Pretend that you're no longer in the job, and Anne's no longer in the job, and it's a whole new council, and a really bad staff. Could somebody game it with the rules that we've put in place?
No, I don't think so. We'll develop administrative rules around it. We'll have a model, and we could certainly put into place measures that would require third-party verification. So I feel confident. And I always try to think in the long term. I always try to think about what happens when I'm not here, having inherited a lot of issues.
So where do those kind of rules live? Because all we'll, all we'll see, or all somebody looking at our statute will see is this ordinance. So those kind of rules, I mean, how much, how enforceable are they? How unchangeable are they? You know, I mean, I guess I don't even know where such rules live in our city documentation.
We have administrative procedures. So forgive me if I've misspoke and set of rules, but we have administrative procedures that we have. So for our vertical housing tax abatement program, we have procedures that are in our files that we reference when we do that. So anything related to that, we develop administrative procedures. Someone can change those procedures, but what we've documented here, I think, in the ordinance would adequately cover any issues like that. So, so yeah, it typically lives within the department, and it lives within our, our files, which we can certainly share.
Would, I mean, I was going to ask the question about whether or not there might be something that we can insert into the code that, that Counselor Beatty, you would feel that, you know, would, would at least point to some sort of verification process, a little bit stronger language than just must demonstrate. You know, I don't know if I want the code necessarily to, to, to require third-party authenti-, you know, authen-, you know, authentication, but maybe, maybe there is some language in there that can, that can, you know, at least point to the fact that the, you know, that staff will be the ones verifying this information, that, that, that we will be tasking any future staff member with, with verifying that, that this information is, is accurate.
I also wonder if there's something we could do that would... If you're trying to scam us, what's the penalty when we figure out that you are scamming us? You know, is, is there something that we could clearly state that indicates that if you are not found to be compliant, you will still be subject to fees, or there will be a fine, or, I don't know, I'm, I'm making things up here.
Let's see. No, I actually have a question on that. Wouldn't that be within the deed restriction that we would place into the property going into, because one of the things that Leila has done is she's been working with the county and others to try and figure out who's going to maintain those deed restrictions. They already have those procedures in place. So my, my one caution is just making sure we don't overassert in the wrong place, knowing that there's going to be a second assertion right at a, at a different location.
I agree. That makes sense.
Yeah, and we are asking that they have a deed recorded prior to CVO. So the city wouldn't issue CVO if they don't demonstrate that that's been recorded. And like I said earlier, it's recorded onto the property. So we won't be, so, so that's how, that's the instrument that we would need in order to approve that. But what we're really trying to do is say, you're going to do 80% units, and you have an instrument that locks you into that, a legal instrument, that we would then approve, and then that would happen prior to CVO. So that would be the penalty, is that they don't do it. They either then pay the CET, or they get a deed restriction recorded, if they want their certificate of occupancy.
So, but, I mean, all of that is well and good, and the deed restriction is crucial, but all of that flows from the same initial calculation. So whether we get, you know, two deeds, or four deeds, or six deeds, you know, I mean, whether we get two units, or four units, or six units, that calculation of that, using your example, $400,000 of CET, you know, that, the, the, the decision has been made there. And so, yes, we get deed restrictions, and that's great, but that doesn't have any bearing on whether we've made the right calculation upfront, I guess.
Counselor Beatty, would it be possible for us to, as a part of the motion, just make an agreement that we'll come back with the calculations and do a presentation on an annual or a biennial basis, just to sort of walk through this for the first five or six years and show you kind of what, how it all worked out? Some of the, and Leila, please correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure we can show some of the numbers publicly, just because they're going to be pro forma numbers for the construction. But is there, is there a balance on that front that we could come up with? Yeah, I mean, I think we can certainly share our analysis of it. I think that becomes public information. We wouldn't share any proprietary information. I can give you a good example, so the model that we used before I proposed this, I had an economist run a couple of models. And just to give you a sense of what we're talking about is, he modeled a five-story mixed-use building, about 200 units. So 20% of those units would be 80% of AMI, and then calculated the foregone revenue using reasonable rent rates over a period of 30 years, and then discounted that back to today. So on that $50 million project, right, they paid 500 grand in CET, the value of those units was close to $3 billion of foregone revenue. So it's a, yeah, it's, it's, I think that's just one example of how, I think what we're, the revenue that we would forego, even for a modest amount of units, would likely offset even the cost of developing those units. So as I mentioned, typical unit nowadays is between $200,000 and $250,000 just to construct. So I think this is a cost-effective way for us to get that, those units. If we could get someone to give us 5% or 10% in a few hundred-unit building would be significant, five units even, you're likely to see that that, that delta's probably somewhere in the $800,000 to $1 million.
So there was something you said in there about regressing, and that was another question I had, which was, you know, do they count, is the, is the credit for foregone revenue based in today's dollars?
Yes.
Future dollars, right? So your foregone revenue in your 20 to 30 is a different thing, right? I mean, it's a, it's an inflated dollar.
It is. So that's why we do the discounting. We look at that 30-year projection, we discount it back to today, so that we're looking at apples to apples.
And is that, I mean, that's not really called out in here.
Um, yeah, I don't think I went into that level of detail in here. But that's, that's typically how the model would work, is you discount that back to today. So it's an apples-to-apples comparison.
Lisa, would it make you more comfortable if, within the ordinance, just as an addendum to the ordinance or something, there was the, the staff, what do you, what do you call it, administrative rules, or?
Well, I mean, it would make me more comfortable if it referred to a specific place where there was a set of guidelines that are, like, enacted. I don't, you know, it's weird, because we don't really have rules. We don't have, you know, we're not, the, the state has rules in addition to statutes. We don't really, I mean, we do have, like, public work standards and things. We have things that are sort of quasi-rules, but we don't have a way that we typically cross-reference those and put them and, and have them sort of codified. And that's why I suggested, rather than doing all that, and kind of, that's why I suggested the five-year sunset, and just let it be revisited in five years, and let's see how it's worked, and, you know. Don't we, in other, I mean, in other pla-, you know, we, we at least, I would say, you know, rather than pointing to, you know, some, some administrative procedures, I mean, in a lot of our ordinances will, or, or code, will say things that point to a specific staff member. And so I'm just wondering if we, if we can't maybe insert something in this code that must, you know, something in the, the, must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the community development, community development director, you know, and I think that that, that way, you know, she can decide whether that requires a third-party, independent third-party, or, or her own expertise in the, in our market.
I, I would, I would like to echo that. I, I don't have the language right in front of me, because the way my computer is set up. But I, I think we can add a, a small clause in there that, I, I think is inherent in the fact that we, it has to be demonstrated to our satisfaction before we issue a certificate of occupancy. But if we put a clause in there that states to the satisfaction, or to, to the satisfaction and the sole discretion of the community development director, or the city manager, or designee, or some such language like that, remember, this is an ordinance, so rather than sunsetting it in five years, I'd probably say we can revisit it in five years, but we can revisit it anytime we want.
That's right.
We can always come back and look at it. We don't really have a bookshelf with all of our administrative rules on there. And there is a chance that over, over time, how we calculate this stuff could change. What we want, we might not want 80% units anymore in a few years. We might calculate it a little bit differently. Absent having that bookshelf for referencing, I think we need to have trust in the department heads who are going to be making the call.
And I think that's consistent with the way we've done other programs like this. Well, we have put sunsets. We put sunset on vertical housing, didn't we? I believe we did.
We did.
No. I mean, and it doesn't mean it ends. It means that's a trigger for the council to rediscuss whether to extend it or not. You know, doesn't necess- necessarily end. But it, but the idea that, yes, you can revisit it, yeah, we can revisit everything, and as Counselor Abma showed us, we have many things in our code that need to be revisited that are 20 and 30 years old. So I mean, I think, you know, that idea, you know, doesn't really answer the, doesn't mean we will do it, so.
I, I don't have, I have a...
Can I just add one thing, Justin?
Yes.
Sorry. I just want to, before we get away from the language too far, we have consistently made it so it's not a department director by title, just because we change titles often. So if what we have said in the past is city manager or designee, and then we just make the person appropriate. So if we could, if we do make the change, I'd just ask that you do it that way. Thanks.
I haven't thought about this in reference to the vertical housing credit. However, I know, as was pointed out earlier, you know, a lot of these developments, large-scale developments, have a large time between the genesis of the idea, the signing of the agreement. I mean, we're going through a process right now. If a certain applicant wants to count on that, and then we take it away as that process is moving, I mean, I guess we could always take it away if we change the ordinance, but if somebody is counting on that as they move to their pro forma, it has some problematic results.
Well, I mean, they, they need to be aware of when it, and maybe that's their incentive to get in the door and get it, you know, get their project in the door earlier.
I find myself channeling the mayor's worst-case scenario reflex a little here, and thinking about the worst case, you know, you've got, I don't know, you've got a builder who's really interested in gaming the system, and they go through this process. And I'm having a hard time figuring out how they wouldn't be caught somewhere along the way, when I think through the process. The only scenario is the development director is in cahoots with the developer.
Not under my watch. Boy, I mean, yeah, I mean, I think we all have faith in Leila, but we don't know it's always going to be Leila. And I don't even know that it has to be in cahoots. It just has to be sort of less-than zealous oversight. Doesn't have to be malfeasance on the part of a future staff. It just has to be, you know, not thinking of the appropriate questions. And frankly, I've seen that in things that have come before me as a planning commissioner, as a city counselor, where staff hasn't always asked the most probing questions. So I mean, what are, what are the questions you think would not be asked in this circumstance? It, it feels like it's a pretty clear-cut situation to me. So I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to understand where you're having stops.
The calculations, and I, and I'm certainly not a finance person, and not a person who knows how these, you know, deals are structured, but it's the questions to probe their claim of what their foregone revenue is. It's appropriate calculations to do that, to do that with adjusting for today's dollars and not inflationary dollars. It's all of that, you know?
Yeah. The main inputs are rents, and then understanding cost of capital and other things like that, which are fairly available data sources. I do like the idea of adding city manager or designee, because when I've encountered things like that, I, I, even if I have the authority, I still check with Anne, with the city manager. So I think what that does is it sets up kind of a double check. So I think that the city manager being the ultimate authority to sign off on it, it would likely be someone in this seat, whether it's me or somebody else, taking that to Anne or somebody else. So there's two people that are looking at it at a leadership level, so I, I like that. I think that that would certainly add a level of rigor to the assessment, because I would have to justify and back those claims or my predecessor. So I think it, it does set up some checks and balances that I think would be worthwhile. And so we could certainly amend the ordinance and suggest, I would suggest saying, multifamily housing project must demonstrate to the city manager or its designee, or their designee, that the financial impact to the developer of the deed-restricted units exceeds a CET that would have been otherwise imposed on the project by at least twice the amount being exempted. I think that's an elegant way to deal with it, and I like it having, I like things that have checks and balances for the exact reasons that you're bringing up.
Does that work for you, Lisa? It doesn't quite tell everything about your issues, I know.
Um, yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's better. But yeah, I mean, I'm, yeah. I'm willing to go with it. I would like a commitment to, like, in two years to have a check-in, and let's see what's happened with it.
I think that's worth doing, no matter what.
Yeah, I'll do you one better, and the first application we approve will bring that to you once it's done, so you can understand how we went through it, and you can weigh in at that time, certainly.
Cool.
That's great. Two, a couple of questions before we move past the end vote. The first one, Mayor, is that we do have a community member who has asked a question and wanted to make a comment. And as this is an ordinance, I believe there is a public hearing, so I don't know if we're getting to that next. The second piece, before we leave this conversation, Scott's saying it's not coming.
This isn't a formal hearing structure, so it'd be up to the chair as to win and if this comment's taken.
Sure.
Mayor, would you like the comments? And if so, do you want me to read them in?
Um, sure.
Okay. Actually, Scott, do you have them up? Do you mind being the reader? Thank you.
There are, there are two separate emails that have been received to OCR mailbox from Rod Smith, who is a Milwaukee resident, and he has confirmed that he is watching this meeting on Comcast Cable Channel 30.
I know.
So his, he has a question and then a comment. I'll read them in the order in which we receive them. His first com-, his first question is, "Will the number of affordable housing by percentage go up as we face a possible recession, or is it maxed at the current percent?"
Is he talking, okay, I'm assuming he's talking about the percentage rent affordability?
There, there is no fixed percentage of units in...
Right.
It's, it's literally, it's literally a math problem of what would we be charging them on the CET? And what are they foregoing for the 30-year history that those, so there isn't a, there isn't a numerical unit calculation. It's, you sort of back into it, right?
Yeah, that's right. It's tied to, so I'm going to give him two answers, just so I make sure I get both what I think he's asking. So just to tag onto what the mayor was saying, that's correct. We don't have a minimum requirement of percentage of units, or bedrooms for that matter. We're tying it directly to the CET that's levered on that project. The second question is that the percentage affordability, so that 80% of median family income number is tied to our ordinance. So at this time, we're keeping that at 80%, which is consistent with state law, until such time that this council or others determined, or the state determines that that needs to be different. So hopefully that answers his questions.
And as a reminder, because this is a commercial building, the CET investment, let's say we were to take money that was being paid into the CET and invest it in building a couple of units in, you know, in, invested in the building, we would be investing at 120% area median income because it's a commercial building, not a residential building. You know, it's confusing because it's an apartment building. That's state law, not our fault. But we're, this is, this is significantly better than what we would be getting if we did it in reverse. If we took the money and said, okay, we will, we will buy out five of your units with this money, and you have to keep them at 120 area median income. So if, I don't know if that helps ease any discomfort, but we recognize that we're going into a recession, and we recognize there's going to be a higher need for affordable housing, which is why we're doing every creative possible thing that we can do to cause there to be more affordable housing units available.
Leila, could you give a, a really brief definition of what a construction excise tax is? Because that might also be part of informing where the question's coming from.
Oh, certainly. So the construction excise tax is a tax on either residential, commercial construction that exceeds $100,000. The tax is levied at 1% of the valuation of the project. So if it's a renovation that exceeds $100,000, or if it's new construction, it's a 1% tax on that valuation. Valuation is typically provided at the time that they apply for building permits, and that's when the fee is paid.
Great. Thank you.
And Mr. Smith also made a comment that he'd like to read, so I'll read that. There should be penalties to the current issue, and the city should have yearly inspection to keep up with our ordinances. If not current with our standards, we should move forward. Oversight needed.
Well, and I would say that goes to what the city manager and the community development director were discussing about the deed restrictions. I mean, the deed restrictions are going to be the key to oversight and enforceability, right? Rather than having the city create an inspection team or something. I mean, the, the city will need to do some kind of testing, some kind of, you know, investigating what, to make sure that, from time to time. But, I mean, it's really about the deed restrictions, right?
Well, so that does beg the question, right? So what triggers a look at what is being charged for those units? Right? At what point will it be brought to the attention of somebody official that the units are at the 80% area median income and not, that they're not paying more than that for them? Can you understand what I'm asking?
I think so. It would likely be complaint driven, or we can certainly work with our county partners as well to notify them of these deed restricted units. So we can find a way to address that.
There's also the part where we do have the, the cap on increases per year on rent. I know there's a much better way to say that than how I'm saying it, but we do have that.
Yes, the, the rent control, basically.
Right. I was trying to not use that word, but that is what it does. Yeah. So there's, there's a couple of different mechanisms that help. It doesn't get to exactly what you're talking about.
Right. So, so you, so you've got an apartment building with 100 apartments, and you run an ad that says, we have an apartment available, and it's $1,200 a month. It doesn't say which unit that is.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
We actually, so in Park City, we actually did this, because we had a large number of units that we were trying to, to cap on their increases. So I guess my commitment to you is, yes, we will. We'll figure out, this is still at least a couple of years out before we have people moving into these units at this point. I'd like to give staff some time. But I think the commitment that I need from Leila, and, and you need from me tonight, is that we will figure it out soon. And that when we come back with the calculation, that we tell you how we're doing that. So rather than trying to do a fast answer on the fly here, it is possible. We have done it before. And we'll bring it in the next report.
Can I ask you a question, Ann, on basic experience? You know, wouldn't, wouldn't a lot of the, the, those units be administered somehow by a partner who is, is working in, you know, subsidized housing? So, you know, I, I mean, it would seem like there would be multiple.
The county.
Eyes and accounting on these units. It wouldn't.
Good point. Yeah.
Yeah. And it's often the county that we would work with in Park City. So, I mean, there, there are other, that's part of why I want to make sure we're, we're working with the right partner, and that we have these discussions for, for the entirety of the project. This will be one of our first big expenditures if this happens in the next year or two in this format. So, yes, there, there needs to be a partnership. There need, there will be accountability. I think that it's very fair for council to ask us to bring those pieces back to you, and to present them when we come in with this calculation. It means that we're probably still, I'm going to give, I'm going to give Leila a little bit of time, because she's a little busy. I'm going to say probably five months before we're back, because we're probably not going to, we're not going to see people in these units for a while.
Yeah.
But we will make sure that we have it before the C, the first CVO is, is granted on any unit.
Most of these units will also be administered, as we, as somebody previously said, and, and watched by the county. But the deed restriction will also enable a tenant to enforce the deed restriction. So you've got a pretty big, a, a multiple source of feedback loops here for, for where these units are sitting, with a pretty big saber in the hands of, of the tenant, as well as the city and the county who's watching over the unit.
And I will say, from experience in Park City, people use it.
Everybody, everybody's going to know about these units. I mean, they're going to be substantially cheaper than the other units in the building. And there's going to be a certain group of people that are going to be wanting to get into these units. And they're going to, they're going to know if, if their rent's going a little high, is my, my guess.
Yeah. I mean, think about what that number means. It's 80% of AMI. So it hasn't, has, in, in terms of affordability, so it has to be 30% of your income at 80% of AMI, which is $57,000, or wherever we are right now. So that's a, that, that, what that means in terms of what the actual monthly rent will be on those units is, is pretty significantly undermarket.
Mr. Smith has provided a follow-up comment, if you're interested.
It's a whole new world of Zoom, so we'll go with that, because we don't have our system that we can use. Go, Mr. Smith.
He said, you answered my question. I was mostly concerned about the amount of affordable housing available in the immediate future, as well as long-term future, given the current economy.
Us, too.
All right. So is there any further questions or discussions? Lisa, why don't you make the motion then, so you can include, maybe you could just reference what Leila said, or include the language you want? I don't know how you want to do that. Make it short enough that I can remember it.
Uh, okay. Hold on. Um, I move for the first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance amending Municipal Code Chapter 3 dot 60 dot 050 with, oh, come on, where's my? With the amendment in paragraph A1, the final sentence to read, multi-family housing project must demonstrate to the satisfaction of the city manager or designee the financial impact to the developer and the rest of that sentence is, is in the packet.
Okay. It is, it's been moved and seconded for first and second readings by title only and adoption of the ordinance amending Municipal Code Chapter 3 dot 60 dot 050 with an amendment as read by Counselor Beatty. Is there any further discussion? Hold those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, men heard. It passes unanimously. Awesome job, Leila. Very cool program. All right.
Scott, do I need to read the title in?
Yes, as it orders Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Okay. An ordinance of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending Municipal Code Chapter 3 dot 60 dot 050, as amended by Counselor Beatty. And again, an ordinance of the City of Milwaukee, Oregon, amending Municipal Code Chapter 3 dot 60 dot 050, as amended by Counselor Beatty.
Okay. Mr. Stopford, you please pull the council.
Counsel President Faulkner.
Aye.
Counselor Beatty.
Aye.
Counselor Parks.
Aye.
Counselor Heisey.
Aye.
Mayor Gamba.
Aye.
Motion carried five to zero, ordinance 2190.
Thank you.
All right. That looks like it ends, the end of our, all that we have on the agenda. I do have one item that I want to discuss with council that's come up and is somewhat problematic. So when we rebuilt the slope down to the beach in Milwaukee Bay Park, we created, what we were theoretically creating was a system for being able to launch human-powered boats at any water level. That's what that is. That's what those step-like structures are. Not specifically meant as a stairway to the beach. If we install railings on that structure, it stops it from being able to be used for what it was designed to be used for. It also.
If we reinstall a railing on one side, it does?
Well, if you think about it, most, most kayaks, most canoes, not, most kayaks and canoes are longer, those stairs are wide. So there's, you know, there's the factor of the curvature allows you to get away with it. But if we put, if we put a railing on one side or the other, it will, it will become more problematic. So it was not meant to be a stairway. It was meant to be a, an, a creative boat launch. I get the issue that's being brought forward. And I've always wondered how, for example, the park service deals with AEA issues when, you know, you have trails that are impossible, I mean, very difficult for fit people to climb, let alone somebody with, you know, a disability. But it's, it's a similar thing. It's not meant as an, I don't know. It, it's, it's going to be problematic if we put a railing on it. It's not, it's going to probably make it not work. And North Clark West Parks is not, does not have any money for this, nor do we. And they don't really have a good solution as to even how they would do it if we were going to do it. But, I mean, I'm sure somebody could figure, an engineer could figure out how to put a railing on there. The point is, it, it will make it something other than what it was designed to be. So just wanted to throw that out.
Is there, I hear you. And I'm not, I, I don't transport large water sport things downstairs. So I, I have to believe you when you say that it's a problem. That said, I wonder if in the Milwaukee Bay Park plan, we could, if there's a way we could ask for some consideration of a way to make that safer for people who are going down to the beach. You know, you run into this problem in parks all the time, where you build something for a certain purpose, and then it turns out that what people wanted was also something else. And then you have to make a decision on whether or not you prevent that, that socially determined use, or you figure out a way to accommodate. You see this most often with, with social trails. You know, people decide that there's something really cool way over there, and they create a path to it. Do you shut down that trail? Or do you acknowledge that people really want to see that thing and make it an established trail and then address further erosion problems that would be created by leaving it as a, just a social trail?
There is a way to get to that beach that is relatively flat. You can walk down the boat ramp and, and then walk down the beach. It's, and you don't have to go down the steep portion of the landscape. But it's not, it's not, it's not designed for carrying boats down, although people, in low water, that's what people have to do. The idea is that in higher water, where none of the other places are accessible, you could literally have a boat in the water, and you're standing on the step that is just above that water level to be able to launch your boat. That's the concept of that thing. It, it didn't turn out as exactly proposed. In some ways, it's more pretty than what we were talking about. It's slightly less useful for what we were talking about, and, and it very much looks like stairs. So.
And I guess the dilemma is, it's not like we really have the option to put in another set of, of actual stairs, because, as, as say, as part of the Milwaukee Bay Park project, because that project is limited to up, from the sidewalk up, right? That's part of how that project, you know, could go forward, is that it's not revisiting the stuff below the, the sidewalk. And so we're not having to have as many layers of, of agency review.
Right. Yeah, no, I, I get that. I was, I guess I was thinking more about, there will be engineers who are looking, who'll be looking at this park in the future. Is there, is it really just that a railing on that stairwell will never work? There's no way to do it? Or could it be that if you have smart engineering people look at it, they may be able to determine a way to make it a little safer for people to go down without sacrificing the, the boat ramp purpose? That's where I was going with it. It's pretty hand wavy. I'm, I'm, I'm not saying I'm wedded to this concept at all. I'm just trying to figure out a way forward.
I, I, there are very clever people out there. I'm sure somebody can figure out a way to make a structure that feels like a handrail on one end of that, and still make it possible to, to put a 17-foot canoe in the water when the water is halfway up those. Not outside of the realm of possibility. And we could go back and ask for a permit to do that little project at some point in the future. It is a big deal. You know, the blowwater mark.
That's why I was hopeful that doing a seasonal removable one might get us out of the blow, you know, out of it being a big deal. But, yeah.
Did, did I miss something? I thought they said that it, it was.
Well, yeah, NCPRD had a list of.
So Kelly, you want to chime in here?
Sure.
Sure. Um, so everything that everyone has said is accurate. Um, hey, we, um, initially, when we just got the request, it was more just something very quick. Do we think we could put something in? And so what the city looked at was, well, we just put a railing in, something prefab, you know, that we would put in. Um, and then we're checking that with NCPRD and NCPRD said, well, anything you do would need to meet, I think it was seven or eight criteria. One of the criteria they listed was removable, though, is it seven? Thank you. Um, and I actually am not confident that what we were thinking of doing pretty quick uh, would need the removable criteria or meet the easy, easily removable criteria, which is very understandable from NCPRD's perspective, that anything that goes in in that location, they'd want to be able to take it in and out easily. So I wasn't sure that what we had quickly kind of tossed out there as a potential near-term solution would meet that removable criteria. Um, we weren't sure that it had to either, that we had to make it removable. Um, it, it's not super smart to have, to have something that will be submerged that you can't remove. So I'm not saying that's perfect, but again, we were, kind of the initial first blush take on this was just what could we do fast that with, you know, with things we have available to us in the near term? So, um, I just want to say, I think a lot of NCPRD's comments are, are sound. It's just what they are saying is, look, we only want to do it if you can take it in and out easily, if it can match the ultimate aesthetic of what we want to have in the park. Um, and that you can ensure that it won't cause any issues with the permitting that we, that we have. And so those are all really good points. And honestly, at that point, I was like, I just don't, I don't think we can. I don't think we can do kind of a quick city-installed project with sort of a ready-made railing that's gonna hit these criteria. Um, so I think you could, um, both councillor Heisey and councillor Beatty, you're right. You could, and Mayor Gamba, you, you can ask, we could ask NCPRD to say essentially what you said, which is they were designed for this purpose. They still need to meet this purpose for boats to be able to launch here. However, we have noticed this type of use, um, has occurred. Um, we also know that your current project is to stay above the high water line. Um, and that's your scope and we understand that this is out of scope. But we just need to make you aware that we have received this request and potentially one of the best opportunities to look at it maybe during, before you wrap up your project. So we could, we could just kind of acknowledge those things, but then still say we have an issue here. Um, it's an issue we're likely to continue to see. We want it to be functional. We understand how you would like it to look and how you need it to operate for maintenance purposes. Um, and we understand it may or may not fit within your scope of work. But we'd still like your help. So, I mean, we could do something like that, I guess, as my, as my, um, is my potential path forward, if that works for you all.
And one other thing to consider is if, if we put a railing up on that, it is now, it will now be viewed as being stairs. And those stairs are not regulation. They are significantly higher. They would not, they are not code stairs, I guarantee it. So then we're gonna get into this situation of, oh, you built a stairway not to code. Cause it's now a stairway, cause you put a railing on.
Yeah, I do have concerns about that when I asked, when I checked in with Stephen. Again, this was all pretty quick. Um, we could certainly do and would need to do more due diligence. Um, he wasn't, he, I, I am worried about that. I asked if it would kind of immediately trigger an ADA issue. Um, and he wasn't sure that it would. However, I think it is definitely something that we would need to explore a little bit, a little bit more because, um, frankly, I do share the same concern, which is you are now putting a railing up in an area that's not ADA accessible and won't be after the railing is installed. So, you know, we're just in an interesting spot where, um, I think the person who reached out to us has a very valid request. Um, I said as much to him, you know, and, and my response back to him, and I understand why he's asked for it. But we're in a very interesting area, both, um, the topography, the regulatory, uh, layers. Um, and then this is really the only place in the city where we've designed something for boats to launch off of that look like stairs. Um, so it's, it's just kind of a tricky spot. And that's why I don't mind punting this, punting the tricky question back to the agency that's gonna be spending a lot of money there. I just want to be really frank that I don't know that they can come up with a solution either.
No, sir.
Okay.
I mean, should we, so the mayor made the point about how you can walk from the, you can walk to the beach from the boat dock. Um, so, I mean, should we be pointing that out as a route to people?
Then you're gonna run into the issue of you have conflicts between people trying to back up boats and people with disability. I mean, I'm, you made it official. This is the official ADA spot and then somebody backs over them with a boat and then.
Right.
You put a slide.
Now you're talking.
Oh, okay.
I mean, you know, there, this is, I think, a problem on a lot of the beaches on the Willamette River. I don't know that any of them are really ADA accessible. Um, and so that, that is a, a valid, um, regional problem. And I don't, uh, yeah, yeah. I don't know that we can fix it, but I, I think it is common.
Yeah, I mean, the, the buildout of the park will have a lot more, um, ADA accessibility throughout. Um, which will be helpful. Um, but it's, it's not gonna solve for this as currently, um, scoped out. But we can still say, we understand that, but we have just something we want to identify and get on your radar or something that we, we've been requested from the community and we'd like your help in examining.
Does that work for everyone?
Sure.
Thank you. I, I actually have a couple of things I wanted to discuss before we're done tonight. Um, and so if Mayor, if you're okay, I'd like to call Leila back on just to talk briefly with an update on the small business loans.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Ann. Um, so we've been busy. We got, uh, maybe some high-level stats because we're still notifying award applicants. We haven't notified everyone yet, so we're still working through the details. Um, but we had a hundred and four total applications for making awards to forty-five businesses. Um, the average award is about twenty-nine hundred dollars. So we awarded, um, the amounts kind of based on the number of employees ultimately. So solo entrepreneurs got a grant for fifteen hundred and, um, those that retained the most jobs got the highest amount, which was four thousand dollars. Um, there's clearly a lot of need in our community. But some stats I just wanted to, to share with you, um, based on the priority criteria that we set forth that advanced people of color, women and veteran-owned. I really feel like we hit it out of the park. Um, we have, of the awardees, uh, forty-seven percent of those are people of color. Um, seventy-eight percent are women-owned. Um, we had, we ended up awarding about half the veteran-owned businesses. That was a much smaller number, but about seven percent. Um, we had a good distribution of business types, so everything from uh, medical, dental, personal business, restaurants, retail sales, across the board. Um, of those businesses, ninety-three percent were specifically listed in the governor's order. Um, ninety-six percent of our businesses were ten employees or less. And, um, the average number of employees of the awardees is about four and a half, so roughly five people. In the average years of business is nine. So, um, we're in the process now, the team is, um, reaching out individually. We, uh, to talk to the awardees and then we'll also be notifying folks that, um, did not receive an award. Um, and then if we do get further donations or we're accepting donations until May fifteenth, um, that's at request of folks that have offered donations. Um, we may revisit some of those folks that didn't ultimately make the final cut. Um, some tough decisions, but we did a pretty methodical analysis. I, I do, I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my team who have been working so hard on this. Um, I especially want to thank Allison Wicks. Um, she's, she brought with her, um, from her experience, a lot of program management. And I do not think I'd be able to give you these statistics today if it hadn't been for her efforts. And so she's done a tremendous job really leading the, um, implementation of this program. And then, of course, supported by Christina is also, Peter Runt has also done a tremendous job just getting through all of this. Um, we were supported by our admin team, so I do want to give a shout out to Dan Harris, uh, Eppesplanter, and Alicia Martin. Lot of data entry and analysis and it was really spot on. Um, they've been tremendously helpful. And then finally Bonnie's team, um, particularly Kelly Tucker, just nailed it. So, two weeks ago tonight, you approved a program and we have executed that program. And we expect to release a stat, um, a press release on Monday. Um, just out of respect to everybody that, um, applied, we want to make sure that we talk to them and contact them first before they hear it from the press. So we anticipate that press release going out on Monday.
Very impressive.
Amazing.
Yeah.
Very impressive.
Sorry, the team nailed it, so I'm, I'm a lucky person.
Awesome. Great job. Give them our thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks to you.
I do just want to comment that, um, the mayor and I participated in a mayor-city manager conversation that we are holding every couple of weeks, um, with, uh, mayors from the region. And actually Happy Valley copied us. So it's always nice when we get to take a leadership role. Um, and I really appreciated the innovation from staff to come up with a concept, uh, that was replicable elsewhere. Um, I believe they used different funding sources, but I know Leila helped them figure out their program too. So it's nice when we can pass it forward. So as much as we help forty-four businesses, a lot more are being helped because of the concept. Yeah, I think on the LOC call last week, they said thirty cities or thirty-something cities are doing programs. I know LO has done one too.
Yeah, almost everybody on, uh, coronavirus report from the region today was doing something similar.
Okay, you okay if I do my final one then, Mayor?
Sure.
So my final update is actually, I just wanted to, um, transparently talk about this on camera so that the public also knows what's going on. Uh, we've been working on our city hall project now for the last year, maybe not quite that long. It's been a while. Uh, and included in that project, we are, um, moving two different pots of funds into a down payment and then adding a little bit of additional money. But most of the funds are coming from two sources and one of those sources is about to be triggered, which is why I wanted to talk about this tonight. Uh, so when we were going through the last budget cycle, we created, uh, some additional staff people in order, or positions in order to do our safe program. And our safe program is our major construction around our sidewalks, um, that councillor Faulkner actually led the charge on, uh, before she became a council member. Those, uh, those funds required us to bring in more engineers in order to execute on the projects and it exceeded our capacity within our buildings for the number of FTEs really that we could house well. So council originally supported the staff in, uh, creating a pot of funds that we would retrofit the existing city hall on. And what our plan was, was to take council chambers where Scott is sitting tonight, make that into a, um, office space and move council into the bay. We had about five hundred and eighty thousand dollars in that budget in order to do that, uh, that move. So that's the first place where, um, we've got a pot of money I'm gonna talk about in a minute. The second place is actually what's being executed on hopefully this week. And that is our pond house. So the pond house, uh, was put up for sale so that we would have to, uh, because the reason we had the pond house in the first place was to have enough meeting rooms for all of the meetings that we hold as the city. This was before we had our new, uh, library, but it also was, um, it's just always been a comment that we needed more space in downtown to gather. Uh, so I believe it was Dan Bartlett, I think, was the city manager at the time, maybe it was Mike Swanson, uh, purchased that building in order to get us some additional space. Um, that building was put on the market in order to get us additional revenue because, um, and we made that decision a couple of times, but we finally decided to pull the trigger when we decided to buy the new city hall. So the new city hall was unexpected. It was, um, an offer from the current owner, Advantis. And, um, we've been able to figure out a way to purchase that building, um, and, and to do two things that are pursuant to this conversation. It's not all it does, but it, for this specific money conversation, it is. The first one is that it gives us the additional meeting space that we need, uh, for meetings in the downtown core. That allows us to get rid of the pond house, that in combination with the, the new library. The other piece of it is it's substantially larger for staffing sizes and it allows us to combine two buildings, but it makes it, uh, makes the renovation of the existing building irrelevant. So, I'm saying all that just so that everybody on air, we received an email a couple of weeks ago and I just wanted to make sure it was transparent about where those funds were coming from for that down payment. Uh, so we're taking the money from the city hall remodel, so the five hundred and eighty and then the purchase price of the pond house. And that's most of the money that we're using actually in this initial purchase. We're then receiving rent back from Advantis for a couple of years. Uh, while they stay, they figure out their new parcel. So all of those pieces combined to be, that the city is actually in the next budget cycle not putting, I believe, any money. And Bonnie's on this call, so if I'm wrong on that. Uh, the current proposal is not to put money into the next budget cycle because it'll be largely leased, um, by another owner or by another leasing. Uh, one of the discussions I did want to have with all of you tonight is that as we're looking at the bond, um, we have two options. One is that we can do the smaller bond, um, and that would be like a five-point-six-million-dollar bond. That bond money does not give us enough money for the long-term renovations that we've talked about. But those renovations are a couple of years out because the lease has been extended through to almost the end of the budget cycle that we're gonna be going into. Um, but currently the rates, the bond rates are super low, like wicked low. It's actually the lowest Bonnie's ever seen them. So it's really cheap money too. But it does mean that the long-term payments for the building are going to be higher. And so we're in a, we're in a weird predicament right now with the way the world is and the possible looming recession. We just wanted to give you an opportunity to weigh in before we take that money out about whether or not we do the five-point-six or we add the renovation money, which is another one-point-two or one-point-three million into that so that we get the right amount of money that you're expecting to come from that bond. So I wanted, we had originally agreed to have the, the renovation money in there. Uh, but it does increase the payment a little bit. We won't be making that payment though by our money for two years because we'll have those lease payments in order to make that the full amount, either with or without the renovation money. That make sense? So I just wanted to give you all a moment to weigh in. Well, for one thing, the one-point-two million is coming as a little bit of a surprise. I thought the, the renovation figure before was a half million or six hundred thousand or something. That's why I have Leila on here, just in case.
Yeah, we had a couple of options for you. Um, the range was close to, and I don't have the figures in front of me, so I apologize, but it was in the eight-hundred-thousand-dollar range. And, um, up to, I think, one-point-three or one-point-four million. You elected to go with the, the lesser number. What we did is we're adding a contingency to that because the renovations are two and a half years out. And so the one-point-two reflects both the dial-down improvements, um, as well as a contingency on top of that.
I actually think there were sort of three options because we were, there was the stairway entrance addition.
It includes that.
There was the storefront addition. We voted against the storefront addition. We voted for the stairway addition. So it was higher than the lowest one, but it wasn't the highest one.
Part of the reason we also gave the higher number tonight, councillor Beatty, so thank you for calling that out, is that when we gave you the proposal for the stairwell, it didn't include two stories of the stairwell. It included one. And what we heard actually in the conversation is that there, we wanted more windows basically. Uh, and so we were putting in enough money to make sure we had enough buffer that, for that as well.
And what happens if we don't need all that money?
Um, well, the, uh, I've never had that problem. We end up spending it. Um, no, I think that that's fair. We can go back, but with the rate of inflation, I expect we will. We can also just lower it by a couple hundred thousand and, and come up with whatever the shortfall is. shortfall is once we get to the point where we're doing the renovations. So if it's, if we want to, we can put like a million dollars in for renovations instead of 1.3. It really is a range. Staff is okay with any of that.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting that. I'm, what I'm wondering about though is if, if construction costs are, and you know, do end up being lower in two years when we're doing this construction, just what happens if we come in under budget?
Bonnie, what happens on a, on a bond payment like that?
Yeah, well, thank you and, and Counsel Faulkner. Basically what we would do is we would go back to our financial advisor and see if we can repay some of the loan back early. I believe that the way that the loan is being structured, since it's a taxable bond, that repayment of the loan, an early repayment of the loan will not cause any penalties, but that is something that we will definitely consider as we go through this process.
As I under, oh, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. As I understand it too, we're, the rent back that we would get from Adventis is...
It'll cover either.
It'll, well, but it's, it will have excess beyond what our payments are in the next two years. So it would also be applying that to a early prepayment or how would that work?
It would not be excess if we bring the full amount in. So if we extend the amount of money, if we do this, the rehab work within the bond, it would, it would eat that margin. That's okay. We still wouldn't be adding, we wouldn't have to pay more on top of that for the two years where it's leased, but we would not be receiving any cash, like additional cash at that point. If it was additional, if we ended up with other money, we would have that discussion about holding it. It really also partially depends on the economy at that point, Counselor Beatty, and I think we'd want to watch and wait and see what was best for the return on investment with the bondholder.
And of course, the big variable here is we don't know what we're going to end up doing with city, the current city hall and whether it's going to bring us any income or not.
Well, we haven't been expecting it would, but that doesn't mean that I, I think that the city will always find a purpose for money. So, but I, I don't think that there's a whole, we're not expecting cash to come from that project. If it comes, I'm not saying we, we'll see where the world is at that point. And I love being wrong when it comes to having more money than less, but that's not our current expectation.
Anybody else, any other questions or conversation?
No. So would you, I guess my question is, are you comfortable if we take the larger amount out knowing that the rate, the rate right now is incredibly low?
Yes.
Yeah, I am.
I am too, because the alternate way that we do that renovation is pulling it out of the general fund somehow.
Okay.
Doesn't make any sense, so.
Perfect. I really appreciate it. Bonnie has been listening to me saying, be conservative, be conservative. So you actually just made her, her planning a lot easier. So thank you for that. Okay, that's all I have tonight.
Anybody else, anything?
Yeah, I had one other thing, which was a letter I sent to all of you for, it's a letter to the Clackamas Soil and Water Conservation District in support of continuing, asking them to continue their funding to the two watershed councils that work here in Milwaukee, North Clackamas Watershed Council and Johnson Creek Watershed Council. I didn't get any adverse feedback, so the letter's been prepared for the mayor's signature. I just wanted to make sure everybody was okay with it going out.
So I read it the first time and it, and I didn't notice anything, but once Scott had formatted it, I did notice a minor just typo. So I don't, I don't know if you want to bother with that or not. I don't think it's critical. But in the, before you begin the bullets, we have worked and are committed to continuing to work with our councils, including but not limited to, it's not even really a typo, it's just that it scans awkwardly and it feels like there should be a modifier in there. I think I've just talked myself out of it. Never mind.
So I'm having a lawyer on staff that hated shells and all that stuff, writer on staff that had to be a work of art. That's good, thanks.
So yeah, the watershed councils, I think, are struggling, particularly North Clackamas just because they're the fledgling group with less of a, you know, of a regular revenues, regular revenue stream. So they're really struggling with what this downturn is going to mean to them. And it's going to be, it's going to be a struggle. So anyway, I will go ahead and send that letter off to them.
Good. Thank you for doing that.
Come in tomorrow or the next day and sign it, Scott?
We can just put your signature on it.
Okay.
It's so much fun having so much power.
I'm the PDF.
Yep.
All right, cool.
Okay.
Anybody else, anything else? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's a move.
Second?
It's been moved to second and to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? We are adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, you guys.
Thanks, everybody.
Good night, great job, everybody.
Good to see you all.